Mr. Buckles.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I owe you an apology. I have finally come to a realization. I do not want your job, nor do I want the job of the teachers that you represent. But I understand a little bit better now how important, how personal, how tragic, how humorous the lives and the jobs are of you and our teachers because of the children and young people that you deal with. Children that sneak popsicles before it's time for supper. They erase holes in their math workbook. And they can never find their shoes before it's time to leave the house. They can't bound down the street because they don't have shoes. They have never counted potatoes. They've been born in places where you and I would never be caught dead. They've never gone to a circus. And like you and I, they live in an X-rated world. They'll bring teachers' sticky kisses or a handful of wilted dandelions. They sleep with the cat and they bury their goldfish. They hug mom and dad in a hurry and they're halfway out the door before they realize, "I forgot my lunch money." They squeeze the toothpaste all over the sink. They may not get dessert in time for supper. They may not have a safe blanket to drag around. They watch their parents watch them die. They can't find a morsel of bread even to steal. They have no rooms to clean up and their pictures are not on anybody's dressers. Their monsters are absolutely real. They spend their allowance before Tuesday. They throw tantrums in the grocery store and in the classroom. They like ghost stories and they shove their dirty clothes under the bed hoping mom won't find them. They never rinse out the tub and they've never seen the tooth fairy. They don't like to be kissed by mom in front of the bus. Heaven forbid at school in front of the carpool. Their tears, sometimes they make us smile. Their smiles make us cry. Their nightmares are real because they come in the daytime. And they'll eat anything, but they've never seen a dentist. They'll be spoiled. No, they won't. They've never been spoiled by anybody. They go to bed hungry and they cry themselves to sleep. They want to be carried. And for those that have to be, we have teachers that never give up on them. We have teachers that never stop smiling for them, saying hello, saying goodbye, "See you tomorrow." They'll grab the hand of anybody. And I'm glad for some of the teachers that we have in Putnam County that extend a hand to our children. I think I know better how to pray for you and our schoolteachers. Father, thank you for this time that we can be together and pause for a moment to understand as best we can how difficult the job is to be a teacher. How difficult it must be for these on this board not to just be concerned with budgets and buildings, schedules and days, but how is the best way to receive children and young people into our school system? To spend more time with them on a daily basis than many of their parents do or can? And then prepare these children to be young people, young men and women, to go out and to face the world, but not just face it, Father. May they be taught how to conquer it.
Yes.
And may they teach others how to do the same. Guide these that lead this meeting, that participate in this meeting, and that have to make decisions. Grant them the wisdom that they need, Father, to do what is best for the people, the students of our county. And Father, we ask all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you for your eloquent words Reverend Phillips.
Madam Chair, I would not have your job unless God has called me to do it.
There's a calling.
And you're stuck with it.
Okay.
Pull your microphone around.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Next, we'll have a presentation from March of Dimes to Interlockin Elementary School, Jenkins Middle School, and QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School.
I'm Vanessa Jackson. I'm the local representative for the March of Dimes. And I just want to say thank you so much. You know, so many times in the news or, you know, the media, we hear all the things that the kids are doing wrong or the school system is doing wrong. But you guys did some great work this year. And I want to thank Superintendent Surrancey for being such a strong supporter of ours. I came and spoke to the principals back in January, I believe. And you guys really came through for us this year. Our goal was 77,000, and we actually surpassed that by $1,500. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you. Really, the schools are our biggest supporters in this county. I don't know what we would do without you. So I just wanted to give you just a, I do not want to take up much time. I am a former teacher. I know what you go through. And you're ready to be out of here. So I promise, if you could give me five minutes. A lot of people want to know what the March of Dimes, well, what do they do for us locally? And so I just wanted to let you know that there was a grant that was given to the Northeast Florida Healthy Start Program, which would service all of these counties in Northeast Florida. And so there was money that was put locally here in this area. The Florida, the state of Florida got a C from the March of Dimes as far as our preterm birth rate. And right now, Putnam County is even lower than that. If they are lower, meaning in a bad way, not a good way, as far as how many preterm births countywide. So it is something that affects this county. It is something that there needs to be more education about, and that is what we are doing. We advocate for that. We go to, in fact, Cindy Earhart, one of our volunteers over here, she, I could not do this without her. And she went to Tallahassee and advocated for some things, you know? And we want education in the pediatrician's office, in the OBGYN office, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted, if you want more information on what we do locally, please feel free to contact me or talk to me, ask me. Last year's director, or I guess chairman of our ELT was Mayor Hill. And I really appreciate him and what all he did for us. And this year, it's Chip Leibel. I'm so excited to work with him. We have several other ELT members that weren't able to be here. But that's enough of all that. I want to say thank you again. And Interlockin Elementary, if you guys will come up, they, which one? Okay, yep. I just, they raised over $6,000. And I just, yes. Let's get in there.
That's awesome.
Actually, they were our highest team as far as money coming in. So I want to say thank you so much. And then, and we do this by elementary, middle, and high school. I think it's easier that way. And then Jenkins Middle School. Yes. They raised over $2,000 for us. And last, but certainly not least, is QI Roberts Junior/Senior. And I worked with Jackie Traxler.
Hi, Jackie.
And she actually brought a lot of students out to help us. They were volunteers. They did face painting.
Wonderful.
And blew up balloons and did all that fun stuff once. So thank you to them as well. So. One last thing before I go. We are looking for a local ambassador family. So if you know anyone in your school that has dealt with this issue, if you would please contact either Chip, or Cindy, or myself, they can give you my information. We, like I said, we are looking for a local ambassador family this year. So anyway, thank you again so much, and I look forward to working with you starting maybe January.
Can we get all of them in the picture?
Yes.
Oh, I get to be in a picture? Yay.
Can y'all get in the photo also? Yeah, absolutely.
We have to do a motion, so we can get on everyone.
I know. We'll get it. It's miserable. Well, it might be that Chip's in the picture.
I was going to say Chip broke it.
I have a phone.
Chip in the center. You should have gotten in the center.
Put the man in the middle.
Eastern, or spring break. So, May 11.
Yeah, after all that stuff.
When all of the sales.
And did you introduce Cindy Earhart?
She did.
Okay, making sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you.
I would say your county is one of the most giving counties. And your.
To be the poorest, we're the most giving.
We really are. And I come from Lake City, which is another small county, but I would say I have enjoyed every moment I have spent here.
Well, thank you so much for those kind words.
Cindy, Cindy, thank you. You've been doing this well over 20-plus, 30 years.
Easy. Selling little animals.
You and I dated for 12 years.
And I do a commercial. I do stained glass and I sell it all from March of Dimes.
Oh, okay.
A little shout out there.
Thank you there.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the lengthy public hearing with the adoption and deletion and amendment of policy. So we're going to go through each one of these separately, and a motion and a second will be made on each. C1, Adoption of New Policy Number 5517.02 Sexual Violence.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we adopt the new policy number 5517.02 Sexual Violence.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of New Policy 8406 Reports of Suspicious Activity and Potential Threats to Schools.
Madam Chair, a motion, the adoption of the new policy number 8406.
Okay. I don't think we have to read the whole thing out again, do we?
Just go through the number.
Yeah, through the number, yeah.
Policy number 8406.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Deletion of Policy 7740.01 Protection of Personnel and Property.
You made a mistake. It's 7440.01.
7440.01 Protection of Personnel and Property.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the deletion of policy number 7440.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of New Policy 8407 Safe School Officers.
Madam Chair, a motion, the adoption of the new policy number 8407.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 1121.01 Criminal Background and Employment History Checks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to the, to the, accept the amendment to policy number 1121.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 1122 Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity.
Madam Chair, a motion, a motion, the amendment to policy number 1122.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 1213 Student Supervision and Welfare.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we amend, approve the amendment to policy 1213.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 1220 Evaluation of Administrative Personnel.
Madam Chair, a motion, amendment, that we approve the amendment to policy number 1220.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 1362 Anti-Harassment.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment, a motion to accept the amendment to policy number 1302.
62.
1362, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 2260 Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a motion, I mean, yes, motion, the amendment to policy number 2260.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 2280.
Madam Chair.
Physical Education.
I'd like us to approve the amendment to policy 2280.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 2623 Student Assessment.
Madam Chair, a motion that we accept the amendment to policy number 2623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 3121.01 Criminal Background and Employment History Checks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion for the amendment to policy 3121.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 3128 Contracts Instructional Personnel.
Madam Chair, a motion that we accept the amendment to policy number 3128.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 3122 Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity.
I make a motion we approve the amendment to policy 3122.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 3213 Student Supervision and Welfare.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval of amendment to policy number 3213.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 3362 Anti-Harassment.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to policy number 3362.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 4121.01 Criminal Background and Employment History Checks.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval for amendment to policy number 421, 4121.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 4122 Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the amendment to policy 4122.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 4162 Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL License Holders and Other Employees Who Perform Safety-Sensitive Functions.
Madam Chair, a motion that we accept amendment number to policy number 4162.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 4213 Student Supervision and Welfare.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the amendment to policy 4213.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 4362 Anti-Harassment.
Madam Chair, motion approval to amendment to policy number 4362.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 5112 Entrance Requirements.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the amendment to policy number 5112.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 5120 Assignment Within District.
Madam Chair, a motion approval for amendment to the policy, which is number 5120.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 5500 Student Conduct.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion approval to amendment policy 5500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy Number 5517 Anti-Harassment.
Madam Chair, a motion approval of amendment to policy number 5517.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 5517.03 Dating Violence and Abuse.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the amendment to policy 5517.03.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
My I didn't go, my I went with the approved, I, yes. I was kind of slow.
Yeah, I waited until.
I was kind of slow.
When you move back in two like we're doing, it kind of gets you a little tongue tied sometimes.
Okay, we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Amendment to Policy 5610.01 Emergency Removal of Students.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the amendment to policy 5610.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 5610.02 School Discipline.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval of amendment to policy number 5610.02.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 6320 Purchasing and Contracting for Commodities and Contractual Services.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the amendment to policy 6320.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 6830 External Financial Audits.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval of amendment to policy number 6830.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 7430.01 Environmental Health Program.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the amendment to policy 7430.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 7440 Plant Security.
Madam Chair, a motion approval to amendment to the policy number 7440.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 8340 Letters of Reference and Disclosure Information Regarding Former or Current Employees.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve to, to approve the amendment to policy number 8340.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 8405 School Safety.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval to amendment to policy number 8405.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 8410 Crisis Event Intervention and Response.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move for approval to the amendment to policy 8410.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendment to Policy 8420 Emergency Management, Emergency Preparedness, and Emergency Response Agencies.
Madam Chair, a motion, approval of amendment to policy number 8420.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last, Amendment to Policy 9800 Charter Schools.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion approval of the amendment to policy 9800.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Whew. Have we ever had that many?
Yes.
We have? Okay, I guess I just blocked it out of my mind.
More coming.
Yeah, more coming? Okay.
Neola, those updates you get.
I know, and thank goodness for Neola. I know Sharon thanks them, I think. I have not received any public comment cards. If anyone would like to make public comment at this time, if you would fill out the green card and hand it to Ms. Cormany. Okay, next, we're going to move an item on our agenda, actually, two, from M, we're going to move M1 and M2 to, right now, before we start the, is it part of the consent agenda? No, before we start the consent agenda. M1 and M2.
Unfinished and.
It's under discussion, unfinished business. So does Melissa need to come up?
Not unless you want to.
Well, we can discuss it.
Okay. So the first thing we're going to do is remove from the table the dates for approved lease agreement with St. John's River State College, the property located at 1,001 Hussin Avenue, Palatka, Florida.
Madam Chair, I vote to remove, does it have to be who voted for this, or?
I'm going to agree with you.
Okay. I vote to remove from the table the dates for approved lease agreement with St. John's River State College, property located at 1,001 Hussin Avenue, Palatka.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So the next item is Discussion, Input, and Action Dates for Approved Lease Agreement with St. John's River State College, property located at 1,001 Hussin Avenue, Palatka.
Madam Chair, can, if I can, before you vote on that, let me give you the dates.
Yes.
We had, you had approved the lease in a prior meeting. We asked that you table the date part of it, beginning and ending date, until we could finalize that in our discussions with St. John's River State. And we did have a prior tenant there. And so we're working on negotiations there. So we have established a beginning date of November of 2018, November 1st, 2018. And the term, if you recall, is 10 years. So the ending date should be October 31st of 2028. Is that correct?
And Ms. Miller, that pleases the board of St. John's River State College as well?
It pleases us very much.
Okay, okay.
We need a motion on this?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Garryard, you want to make one, or you want me to?
Yes. Madam Chair, a motion that we table the date per the information given to us by.
No, we're not tabling it. We're voting on it.
It's already been tabled.
We've tabled it, we've brought it off the table now that we know the dates. We're going to vote on those.
Oh, you have the date.
Yeah, that's what he just gave us.
I thought he said he didn't have the dates.
Dates for approved lease agreement.
Okay, then that we.
Do I need to repeat the dates again for clarification?
I got, oh, okay.
November?
Beginning, the lease beginning between Putnam County School District and St. John's River State College for the property at Mosley on Hussin Avenue, 1,000 Hussin Avenue, November 1st of 2018, and ending on October 31st of 2028. That's a 10-year lease.
That's very exciting. Long time in coming.
I appreciate St. John's for their patience and looking forward to our working relationship.
A long working relationship.
Okay, so then, Madam Chair, a motion approval of.
The date.
The dates for St. John's River State College to occupy the property located at 1,001 Hussin Avenue in Palatka for a 10-year period, starting November of this year and ending October 31st, 2028.
I second that.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to the consent agenda, if you will, on page two. We have removed several items from the consent agenda, and I think I'll just mention those before we start. We have items F two and H three have been removed from consideration. And then, is that it? No?
Because you picked it up somewhere else.
H three, yeah, H three was the contract.
That's all that we had.
Okay, and then, I guess you noticed that there was some revised documentation later on in J. Okay, so.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the.
Well, let's see if we've got anything to pull first.
Got anything to pull first? Yes, we do, I think so. Let me look real quick.
Sandy, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Didn't the superintendent have something he wanted us to?
We have one, we have some stuff on the.
That's in discussion, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, I make a motion, if we have nothing to pull, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus the pulled items of F two and H three. And is there anything else that has been pulled?
Not to my knowledge.
And along with the revised documentation that we have in our personnel matters.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries for the consent agenda. Okay, we'll skip over to page three. We have no emergency items if we had the removal of items F two and H three. We had a change in item wording, and she corrected that with number 5500. The personnel matters were updated, and there are no emergency items. Wow, that's a great thing. It's not very, doesn't happen very often. Okay, so, and we're back to M now, that was quick. We'll talk about M three, which was, we had removed from the table the appointment of a board member to serve as the representative on the St. John's River State College Board, and we never found out anymore about that.
That was at the request of Ms. Jorgensen, and I have not been able to confirm with her.
We should ask Melissa while she was here. Yeah, because I don't know of any, have, David, have you ever been on that board?
We have not had a.
I think Kathy may have been the only person that ever.
We've not had a representative on the St. John's River State College Board. Not a board, not a board of trustees. It's, it's a new deal.
Oh, yeah, because it doesn't say that.
Yeah, so you can entertain a motion to table again.
My, my concern here would be with the board attorney is that, is that any relationships that the board would enter into with the college would not be in jeopardy of having a board member serving on that board.
I'm not gonna do it.
Where, where it could be considered a conflict of interest.
I think Ms. Cormany was just waiting to hear back from Ms. Jorgensen, who asked for it to be on the agenda.
Okay.
And I don't think that, yeah.
Then we should table it.
Just table it.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
I would like to see it tabled until we have a full board, if that's possible.
Correct, and it's not gonna be a problem, because I'm not volunteering for that, so.
It doesn't work that way, you may be selected by a majority vote of the board.
Maybe, maybe not.
I'm just messing with you.
Make a motion to table it.
I make a motion that we table this.
Or keep it on the table.
Or keep it tabled until further notice or recommendation from the superintendent.
Second?
Otherwise.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so do we even need to do four? We, we entertained four when we, yeah, okay. Under new business, discussion input and action, letter of support for Edge, for their USDA loan.
I'll be glad to give an explanation.
Give, give us a brief overview, and we've all had a chance, I suppose, to speak with you, yeah.
Right. I've received an correspondence from Ms. Freeman back in August requesting a letter of support for the application for a USDA loan of, I believe, 1.8 million dollars. And we contacted USDA to find out what, what was the criteria for us to approve such a letter. And we wanted to make sure, anytime we make a recommendation, we want to make sure what the, what's expected, so. When, when we heard back from USDA, they gave us in writing basically four criteria. The criteria were, was, were, had to have a 15-year charter, which we do, which you approved in 2015, 2016. They had to be favorable as far as state grade, school grade, and of course, with their recent C, they meet that criteria. And then the other two criterias, they had to, their financial reporting has to be adequate, has to be up to date, and their FTE reporting also must be adequate, okay? So I provided you information to that effect. We did have concerns about the financial reporting accuracy and the, or the timeliness of the reporting, excuse me, and of some questions about FTE reporting. So with that said, we, they did say that the board would have to actually draft a letter saying that the Edge School was in good standing. And good standing would mean that they met these requirements, which are part of the chart. So we provided you that information, and again, I wanted you to be aware of what, what was expected before any letter was sent. And we, we had, I discussed that with each of you independently, and I just wanted you to actually make an accurate decision on how you want to proceed.
Well, I appreciate, can, may I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may. No, I'll wait until you're through.
I appreciate you getting us the information and letting us meet. It is not uncommon, it's pretty common practice to approve USDA letters for loans for charter schools. I'm, I've been a proponent of Edge and still am. I, I think that, listening to what I listen to, they've got some, a few history problems that, that don't need to be sugarcoated. It needs to be a letter composed by the board attorney with information. I was so pleased when they got the C, and, and they're, they're, they're really at a, at a, at a balance there. They've got a couple of the criteria, the charter, the lease, for, for, what'd we say, 15 years? And you've got the.
School grade.
School grade, and, but on the other hand, we have some, some really tough dynamics that have been dealt with that we could have as a board done something about some years ago. And I, I'm, you know, you just, there's one thing that you can't afford to do, and that is to not tell the facts when you send a letter to the federal government. I'm optimistic that even with the information, that they will approve the loan, and it will be, if, if the other board members agree, I think it would certainly behoove us to have the board attorney word it. So if something did happen, and Edge were to not be as successful as I hope that they, and pray that they will be, that we're not in any way caught in the balance of, of the money. So I think, you know, we discussed that as well, so that, that's how I feel, and I, I feel like they would, they will certainly get their loan, but I have signed these same letters in the past to superintendent, and it's not uncommon.
Okay. I, I too have been a support of Edge and the information that is shared with us. And having met with the superintendent, hearing the criteria that was presented to us, I'd like to see us table this, set up a workshop ASAP, come together with Edge and ourselves, and, and sit down and talk about this letter that would go out. Certainly, we want to tell the truth, just as you've said, but still too, we don't want to do anything that would negatively impact Edge. So I'd like to propose, I would, that we table it and schedule a workshop. That would be my opinion on the matter.
And I agree with you, Ms. Gilliard. I would like to, you know, we have, and Ms. Odom at prior meetings has discussed her concerns with the financial reporting, so I, I want in that workshop for us to have an update on your finances, and, and these are things that I want to hear before. I will sign a letter, I want to sign the letter more than anything. I'm so thrilled that y'all made a C, that was just wonderful news. You've met the first two, two objectives of what they are requiring, but I am very, very concerned with FTE reporting. In my experience as a guidance counselor, in my experience as receiving transcripts at St. John's River State College, and what has been reported by our data department, there are some things that we need to get, that you need to get worked out. I want at that workshop a copy of your master schedule. I would like to know what, what classes are being taught by whom, and what their certifications are. And, and after we find out all those things, I have no problem signing a letter to support Edge.
Well, we, we, we really know what the problems are, I, I just think it's.
But I want to see that they've been worked out.
Okay, well, you certainly, you have a right to, to that, and I, and I understand that. We have sent staff over to look and to help, and, at our request, and even that would be reported in a letter to USDA by the board attorney, that, you know, that things are not quite as stellar there as we would like to see them, but I will do whatever you guys want to do, it's a majority rules here, I'm fine.
So you have a, it's an actionable item, so whatever, it's a pleasure.
Ms. Gilliard, would you make a motion?
I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to motion that we table item N one, discussion input and action, letter of support from Edge, USDA loan, and schedule a workshop, and then that workshop will determine the length.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And do we set the workshop?
Yeah, y'all need to let us know when you would like to have a workshop.
And let's do it ASAP, so.
Well, I want to be able to make sure Pat and her crew.
Right.
It's a time appropriate with y'all.
They're just, they're still getting settled, I, I mean, it is.
We're three weeks into school, at their school.
We're going to have it, and I know that, but it is, it is a.
But a master schedule is supposed to be done before school starts.
All that would be reported to USDA, but that's okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Sure.
Ms. Pat, how does Monday look since Chairman, Chairman Crawford said that you're still getting settled in? Or would you like it Thursday or Friday? I mean, whatever fits, you know, suits you all. Do you want it this week, or do you want to go to Monday of next week?
No, I'll be in New York.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna have to be, it, you know, this is gonna be a.
You're gonna be gone the entire week?
Here's the only, here's the only.
Let's do it Friday.
Here's the only thing that I, I really don't like about this, is that we're gonna be airing so much dirty laundry that would be in a letter to.
What's dirty?
Well, I mean, things that look, look like they haven't accomplished this, and they haven't accomplished that, and they've accomplished this, and they've accomplished this other. But it's, it could all be, it could all go to USDA as it is, without us sitting here and asking the same questions that we just heard when our, when we met, I assume, with the superintendent, but that, it's already been voted on. We'll, we'll meet whenever you guys want to meet, but I, I know for their staff, it's gonna be hard for them to get people away to come sit down at a workshop.
We can have it after the school day.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, we're gonna allow them to finish their work day.
I'm gonna give her back her audited interest question, she wants me to come sit in in the morning, but anyway.
I'd be happy to take it back.
You've got your grandchild here.
Is the 24th suitable to you?
What is the 24th?
You said next Monday.
No, you said you're not gonna be here.
No, I said the following Monday.
Oh, following, okay, sorry.
Would Tuesday work?
The 25th.
It's fine with me, unless, unless I have a doctor's appointment.
I got a doctor's appointment at 2.
You know what schedule?
What time?
What time do y'all get out, Pat?
Four buses, 4:15.
You say 4:30?
Would 4:30 give them time enough, you think, to get here? All right, 4:30 Tuesday.
What time is training? One to five?
And I'll check with the staff and make sure that's okay, and if not, should I call Eugene or?
Call Sharon, probably. What's wrong with Tuesday?
I'm checking, we have another group, what, is that a pretty big training, Laura?
I can see if you can move it to another place, it looks like the training center is for the back-to-school batch, the IT back-to-school batch is at the training center.
I mean, it's the last half hour, so if, we could work that out. I mean, they, they could be in here until we meet it.
I believe it's actually, do you remember the Florida partnership?
Right.
Who came and spoke to you a couple of weeks ago? It's their training, we'll just have to work with them to move it to another location.
Tell them to work during lunch.
Okay.
Well, what about Wednesday, the 26th?
I'll be gone.
If you just push the meeting to 5 o'clock, I think that both.
Okay.
Okay.
With 5 o'clock, it'd be better?
That's fine with me.
Would that be better for you, Pat?
Well, I'll have to check it out.
Oh, wait a minute.
5 o'clock on the 25th right now?
Yeah, I may have to leave early, but that's our installation for Kwanis.
Well, you can tell Kwanis.
I'm talking to Red.
I knew she'd get on to it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll do what we have to do.
Okay, 5 o'clock then.
Yeah.
5 o'clock that Wednesday? Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 25th at 5 o'clock.
You want to schedule that for how, how long a period of time? Just so people can schedule that, an hour?
Hours?
An hour?
We should be able to get our questions answered now, or?
So from 5 to 6?
Mm-hmm.
September 25th.
Is that suitable to you, Mr. Buckles?
If I don't have a doctor's appointment, I can cancel it with my cardiologist and change it to another time.
Okay, we're good.
All right, we're good.
But I should be able to let you know something personally about you.
Okay.
Okay, so. It's time for board reports, Ms. Gilliard.
I don't have anything. I was, I was just gonna mention that keeping Middleton Bernie's staff.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
In our prayers, and that's, that's it.
Mr. Buckles?
I have several items I've been handling and dealing with over the weekend, and I've been fortunate enough to have Mr. Bowling.
Thank God.
Bowling helping me, thank goodness, with some of the issues, and I'd like to ask Mr. Bowling to come up, and, and I've got several things that he has looked into, so he can report back to the board, and. The number one, the number one problem that, that I, I encountered was from quite a few parents in the last week or two that have had serious concerns with bus problems. I talked with Mr. Bowling, and he's a, he's a seasoned administrator, and he's been through these things before, and I, I asked him to get with Ms. Phil, Director of Transportation, and try to come up with some ideas and, on how we can find more bus drivers, and how we can make the job more attractive, where we can accommodate students, and ways to do it, and things we can, we can try, and I'd like him to go ahead and give us a report on what he's come up with. I've, I've heard it, but I'd like each of you to hear what he's got going.
Yes, sir, and, and thank you for the opportunity to actually say it in a public venue, so maybe it will cut down on some of the phone calls, but, but not only that, we're, we're happy to answer the phone and, and talk to individuals, but just get the word out en masse that we're actively working on this problem, and it's a serious concern for us as well. In, in our opinion, humbled opinion, we think to solve the problem of overcrowded buses and simply not enough drivers is to have bigger buses and more drivers, which sounds very simple, but.
Very expensive.
Well, the, the buses are expensive, and let's start there, we have ordered new buses. We had several smaller buses in our, in our fleet, and if I say anything wrong, Ms. Phil, I invite you to jump right in and correct me, but we aren't in the business of ordering smaller buses as we go forward. We're looking at strictly ordering the 77-passenger buses.
And the old, the old buses had about 60, 65 seats, is that right?
65, yeah, that's, that's about right. And we just ordered, how many 77-passenger? 13 77-passenger buses have been ordered of those summer demo models, and those are getting letters placed on them as we speak, and they should hit the district any day. Now, when we get those buses, some of our more crowded routes are some of the QI Roberts routes. We intend on plugging those directly into those routes. I think the areas of the next biggest concern are probably down in South Putnam, Crescent City. We're certainly looking at getting, sending the next round or batch of 77-passenger buses, buses that way. And so, so there's a little bit of relief coming in terms of, of that effort, but the biggest problem is live bodies. We need to increase our, our workforce, and that's been a difficult task, to say the least. One of the things that we brought up in management team, and, and we're prepared to submit it to the board for approval at the next board meeting, is actually changing the job description, so that the requirement to have a high school diploma is taken away, essentially. I know we're in the business of educating children, and, and we don't like to lower any standard. standard, but I think the bigger problem here is evident, and I think that if, well, I know for a fact that that requirement in and itself has excluded several qualified, otherwise qualified individuals in the past. Yes, ma'am.
And Thomas, let me add on to that a little bit. In conversations I've had with local contractors, they're having a hard time just keeping their normal employees, because there are so many jobs available. They're bailing out and going to St. Johns County, Clay County, Alachua County, Marion. They're going where the jobs that are paying the money are, and Ms. Spell is, there's no reason that we should hamstring her over a technicality like that. If there's a way that we can get these people, I thought Mr. Bowlin was right on the money with that, that maybe we can find a way to get them a high school diploma while they work for us, or...
Certainly, and that would be a part of the incentive, not necessarily as a requirement to keep your job as a bus driver, but certainly as an incentive to say, we'll pay for your education if you come go to work for us. We will support you wholeheartedly in getting that either high school diploma or equivalency, and that would be part of the promotion behind the whole thing.
And you already got a...
It's not a Putnam County problem. Bus drivers in and itself is a nationwide problem. And you're right, the bigger districts usually have the most, and they can afford to pay a little bit of money. But after the next board meeting, we'll probably have an executive session, so compensation is always on the horizon. I hate saying that out loud, but it's a fact. You know, if we're looking anywhere, that's a good starting point. So we're thinking about just, I would tell you what, I go to bed and I wake up thinking about...
And the only phone calls I've gotten since school started, they've all been about buses.
Well, my second concern is, you already have a MOU with Mr. Modle and the union?
That's right. That's another thing. And so one of the issues is athletics. Sometimes our high school teams, and we'll use football because it's football season, the football teams will have to leave at 1:00 in the afternoon to go to an away game, and we don't have enough drivers to let them leave school early. We say you have to wait until those afternoon routes are run, and then you can take off for your game. So we've, Mark, the union president, and I met recently, and we constructed an MOU to allow high school coaches and athletic directors to get their CDL at the cost of transportation.
Karen, you should stay up.
So essentially, it wouldn't affect any bus drivers. They get first take, so any bus drivers, all the contract language that speaks to the seniority of how a bus driver is assigned that extra duty, all of that remains in place. Those athletic directors and coaches can only drive if there's an emergency situation like a...
Will we have the buses available?
We have plenty of buses available.
It's drivers.
It's drivers, yeah. Of the few drivers that we have, we need them driving big buses.
Yeah.
But we still have some buses just sitting there.
And if we work out this deal with the ones that are in need of a high school diploma or an equivalency, there need to be some stipulation that they have to give Putnam County X number of years.
We had thought about that, but that's a very good idea.
Yeah, you don't want to get them ready, and then they go where some of the others are going. Yeah, we gotta...
You can tell she was a principal for quite a while, can't you?
That's a great idea.
It is a good idea.
That's a good caveat to add.
That's wonderful. Thomas, I also, we didn't get much into the subject, but if bus discipline, and we obviously approved some discipline stuff today, we haven't really met and had a workshop, and now we just got another one on Edge.
Make workshops?
Well, no, I've been asking for one for discipline, and I thought we'd wait till around October and get everybody time to get settled in. It's not that I hate workshops, it's just, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish, and sometimes I vote for them, and sometimes I don't. But if we've got anything that's hindering our ability to have a student who chooses to disrupt on the school bus and is not, and is endangering the lives of the rest of the students and the bus driver, then we need to get them, expel them from the bus, and let them find their own way to school, because, you know, I've seen kids killed in bus accidents, and people, and you have too. So there's, there's just, this is serious business, and it is.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Spell told me she's got to drive again tomorrow, and, you know, she has to be there to answer the phones and help the drivers and send people out that break down, and so we've got to, I appreciate you getting on this very much.
Well, no matter what time in the morning that I wake up with another transportation nightmare and call up Ms. Spell, she's usually either in the office or behind the wheel driving the bus, and that goes for, it doesn't matter how late in the afternoon that I wound up working, she's still at it. So I think she goes home, sleeps, and then goes back to the transportation department. We're working hard to solve the problem, but it's a complex issue.
Well, we appreciate Sharon, everything y'all are doing.
And I'm fascinated with her working hard on it.
Well, she's one of mine, too, and she's special to me, and I know that she has the ability to understand the needs. There's another concern that I have, and I found out because I've been working on a pre-K problem that was out on Highway 310, and I've found out that, and it needs to be fixed if this is true. We have evidently on our website an existing map...
Oh, yeah.
...that shows the attendance zones as Kelly Smith going all the way to Deep Creek on Highway 310, but our bus transportation zones do not coincide with that attendance zone from Antalocken Elementary. I got into this because I was dealing with a parent who had a problem at a school, and I'm not gonna go into names, but I found out some information that, it's just something I need, I could be totally wrong with the information that I gathered from people today that were involved in that decision. I didn't have this information when I spoke to you, but if our maps are not accurate, and if our transportation maps are different than the school's own maps, then that's something I need, we need to get, we need to straighten out for you guys.
Right, and we started to look at that, and then I think I got the same misinformation that you got, that the particular student, because there aren't a lot of families that live in that area, but I think the particular, if I remember correctly, I had IT personnel and I had transportation personnel in the same room, and then it became a non-issue all of a sudden in terms of that student would no longer be going to that school. So it became a non-issue, but I thought we decided, or at the end of the day, we decided those, the lines did align. I mean, both maps were essentially identical, but we'll follow up on it.
That was, it could be incorrect information I received from district personnel who may not know, but we just need to make sure we are congruent...
We'll give it another good hard...
On our maps. Then, you know, we send buses, people don't realize it, but you will send a bus out all the way to Lake Delancey, you know, toward, you know, the Marion County line, and pick up just a few kids, and then when you come back and you hit the Barge Canal Bridge, you have to go 310. If you were to go and pick those children up in that zone, you know, that's another six miles or more out of the way, so it's a long haul, and thank goodness the Boys Ranch guys have their own bus, so we don't have to go all the way down there. But anyway, you'll continue to update us on this and let us know what we can do, and bring us that job description, and the board can look at it. And if you don't have any more questions, Jim, I'd like to ask him one more thing.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I had him look into a complaint that I received from parents about lack of computers and Chromebooks at Crescent City High School, and I'd like to let him give a report on what he has found going down to Crescent City High, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Yes, sir, I started with our IT department, and let me start by saying this is an ongoing investigation.
Yeah.
So we're right smack dab in the middle of it, but, and I have Lennon, the director of IT, Lennon Harvey, here as well, but one of the members of his department and I took a ride down to Crescent City, and I asked him to show me what he had in, what we have assigned basically, I mean, based on what's in the computer on the IT's inventory, how many computers are assigned to Crescent City. And this is Chromebooks and Chromeboxes, and he has 724 on the books, and there are 476 students assigned, so it seems like we have plenty enough computers to go around. So there's a, right now, there's, we're trying to find out what's accurate. The school's inventory, IT's inventory, the truth is usually somewhere in the middle. We may need, there may be an inventory issue, there may not be, but we're in the midst of getting to the bottom of it. Melissa Coleman and I spoke preliminarily about getting someone from the IT department, coordinating with the local school administration to all gather down in Crescent City, and let's find out.
Get our own on them.
Exactly right. Let's find out exactly what we have on site, and then as we go forward, how can we make sure that everyone's records show the same thing?
Well, because the parents have gotten information that's not, you know, that's not accurate. With our information, they're told there's not enough computers at the school for kids.
Everything I read on Facebook is accurate.
Yeah, that's what they say.
Anyway, I appreciate that. I have nothing else for you, Thomas, but we'll be in touch on the bus thing.
Yes, sir.
And look forward to, look forward to the job description coming.
And Ms. Spell, thank you for driving a bus. If I had to drive a bus, we'd be in big trouble. That's going above and beyond the...
If you need a bus aid, stop by and pick me up. Yeah, she'd be a good one.
You remind me of Miss Birdie Oliver.
I know, I'd be one for Birdie.
I was quoted one time in the paper as saying she was the bus driver, as what Tiger Woods was the golf at the time, so she could drive, she drove in a train derailment.
She was amazing.
People that survived, and she was amazing, yeah. That's it for me.
Mr. Douglas, do you have anything for the good of the board?
Everything is mobile in the legal department.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
I have a few things, and I think they're all positives.
Good.
So tomorrow, we're actually gonna have a photo opportunity and kind of a gathering, if you will, ceremony at Palaca High School, and GP is gonna be there, and they're gonna make a $50,000 donation to our CTE department to, as part of our advanced manufacturing.
Yay!
And we actually have equipment on the ground.
What time is that?
It's gonna be at 1:00 PM, and we've already contacted the newspaper about it, but this is just a great example of our partnership with our local industry. As you know, we also received a $250,000 appropriation from the legislature this past year. And use this donation, these donations as a financial match, along with some of our school funds, but great things happening at Palaca High School and that partnership with us, and advanced manufacturing, and GP, and Seminole, and, you know, we're definitely gonna meet the needs of our local community, so that's gonna be a great day.
I was gonna ask real quick, will this either spread to the west and the south then, or are they bust in?
Well, yeah, we're giving them the opportunity to come in. This is years, what, two through four? Is that correct?
Yes.
Matter of fact, Renee Huff's gonna be there, and she's been very instrumental in making all this happen.
Awesome.
Each of the high schools have offered year one, and now because of the cost, we're trying to focus our resources here in Central.
Right.
And so students do have the opportunity to come in and take these courses, but at Palaca High School, because of the cost. So, but they do have the opportunity to do so.
Good.
Am I correcting all that, ladies? Okay. Also want to mention, Monday is the Bartram Frolic out here on the riverfront, and our second graders, many of our second graders will be on a field trip and see that history come to life, if you will.
So exciting.
Yeah, it's a great day. We did that last year as well, so. Wednesday, the 26th, will be Dad's Day. Dad's Day, and that's where we're gonna invite dads to come into our schools, take part in activities at the school level. Granddads as well.
No, no, I ate lunch with four of them today. I'm fine.
You've had enough, huh?
Take uncles.
They wore me out.
Uncles, whoever you're...
Any male.
Maile Romar.
In that child's life.
They call it Dad's Day, but dads could be a number of things.
I even got a few that weren't mine that were with me, so I wound up with about eight.
On Friday, we're gonna have the Palaca Occupation at the Bronson-Mohawen House, and Friday, the 28th, and that will be another history lesson, if you will, and our fourth graders will be attending a field trip there, so that'd be a great day.
Wonderful, learning local history.
Talking about needing more personnel and keeping our personnel, this Thursday, Ms. Whitehurst, myself, and some of her staff are gonna travel to Gainesville and meet with the Northeast Florida Educational Consortium and talk about a leadership development project that we're gonna be working on to retain teachers. So that's gonna be a goal of ours, and...
That's wonderful.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to some other districts, but that is the focus of ours, not only to recruit, but to retain our teachers. So keep that in mind. And I do want to announce, Ms. Nelson, Beth Nelson is in the audience, and I just want to, I did notify yesterday by email, but Beth Nelson is the new principal at Browning Pierce Elementary, as of today.
I'll show you around the city of San Mateo, God's country. Yeah, I'll show you around.
She knows what folks out there...
So as you know, she was formerly the principal at Antalocken Elementary School, and it's kind of interesting because both schools are identical.
Identical.
So it's kind of like, she gets lost because they all look the same, you know? But as you know, Ms. McCool is taking leave, you know, for personal reasons, and we wish her the best. And Mr. Ted Hangle, who's the vice principal at Price, will be the interim principal at Antalocken Elementary School, so...
That's great.
Anyway, I've talked to all the faculties, everybody is gung ho, and we're not gonna miss a beat, so full steam ahead.
Beth will love Browning Pierce as well, and you'll miss Antalocken, so they'll miss you.
Yeah, so congratulations, Ms. Nelson. She's...
Congratulations.
Yeah, she'll do a great job.
Congratulations, Beth.
That's all I have.
Okay, if that's all, we're going to adjourn the meeting.